I call this regular board meeting to order Monday, February 6, 2023. Would you please call the roll, Mr. Zink?
Mr. D.
Here.
Ms. Bodie.
President.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here.
Board, we'll move to number two on the agenda, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper.
Discussion? Go ahead. I just want to challenge, or I just would like to challenge the professionalism of getting the agenda out on a Friday and making it incumbent upon the board to spread their weekends between their family and board business. There are other boards in Ohio that get theirs out five business days prior to the board meeting, and I would just ask that this is something that we can start adopting to be more professional.
Is there further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
I have one more thing, too. Sorry. If I could just, if I could just respectfully remind you that we follow the Robert's Rules of Orders, and before you make, before we vote on something, if you could state the, what we are voting on, I actually have printed out for you the Robert's Rules of Order and what's that and what that, what they say. So it just makes things run a lot smoother and less chaotic when we follow the rules.
Any further discussion?
No, no problem.
Mr. Zink.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes. Wait, can you please state that question? What are we doing?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D. Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Zink. We'll move to number three, executive session. Board, I am looking for a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Is there discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board, we'll move into executive session in the downstairs conference room, and audience will be back.
I'm going to call the meeting back into order. Board, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. D., would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Isaac. For B, I don't have any precedent comments right at the moment. Mr. Vogelmann, superintendent comments?
Just thank you to everyone for coming and thank you to the many people who have sent me text messages and emails encouraging me, thanking me, telling me you're praying for me, your support means a lot. I appreciate it. It is not disregarded. I take it to heart. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zink, treasurer comments?
I just want to also kind of thank everybody for letting me do the agenda setting from Disney World. So that might have been, that might have been a first for Lakota. So I did take a screenshot. We did not put that on social media, but I had my little Mickey Mouse shirt on. So that was nice.
We confess to a bit of envy while watching you from the Beckett Room, Mr. Zink. So I'm glad you had a great time with your family.
Good evening. Good evening. Tonight's school spotlight will shine on Heritage Early Childhood, Independence Elementary, Hopewell Junior, and East Freshmen. Throughout January, every student at Heritage ECS had the opportunity to explore activities centered around coding in their innovation hub. They use technology tools like B-Bots, Botley, Osmos, and online coding sites during their hub time. Consider this just one example of how at five, six, and seven years old, students are getting introduced to the future-ready skills like critical thinking and problem solving. Over at Independence, the sixth-grade leadership group, known as Team Inspire, helps lead by example by taking the reins on various school initiatives. This includes coordinating all aspects of the stuff the bus food drive for Reach Out Lakota. And as a side note, you might remember that Independence brought home the trophy this year for the most items collected at just over thirty-three hundred items. The group also acts as student greeters during school events and set up the school's compassion tree, which included making all of this year's gift idea ornaments to be claimed by Indy families. At Lakota East Freshmen, we are spotlighting the success of a peer tutoring program that is actually two years in the making. Latin and study skills teacher Sarah Elmore has recruited close to twenty leaders this year who make themselves available to their classmates during their daily advisory time to help with their academic work. The program is run by students and for students, which is likely a big reason they've seen a very steady increase in the number of students who are taking advantage of it. And then finally, today, we are excited to have with us tonight representatives of Hopewell Junior's Buddy Program. The initiative is just one result of the school's Sources of Strength Group, and it pairs junior school students with their younger counterparts at Hopewell ECS. We appreciate our health teacher and sources of strength advisor who's here with us tonight, that's Lori Jones, for being here, along with students Olivia Burke, Delaney Finch, Zina Alhooman, and Carly Maddock. They're going to share a little bit more about the Buddy Program tonight.
Hello, my name is Carly Maddock.
And I'm Zina Alhooman.
My name is Delaney Finch.
And I'm Olivia Burke, and we are two eighth graders from Hopewell Junior School.
Well, make that four now. It is our understanding that the Lakota community is interested in learning about our Sources of Strengths Buddy Program at Hopewell Junior School, which is led by Lori Jones and Ally McIntosh. We are currently on our second year of the program, which is a partnership with Hopewell Early Childhood School.
If you aren't familiar with our group, it was made to spread positivity and helpful tools for young adults as they go through life. To start, one or two members were paired with a first grader who needed an extra connection or someone to talk to or hang out with.
Olivia and I were paired with the same young girl and immediately felt this motherly sense of longing to care for her. You might know what I mean.
Though we've had a few roadblocks, such as only having fifteen minutes every Monday, we've managed to create and foster a relationship with her as like a older sister and their sibling.
Sometimes we will color, play board games, or even talk with other kids in the program, but what it's really about is making them feel loved, seen, accepted, and guide them.
She has said some hurtful things like, "Shut up," or "Your drawing doesn't look good," or "You don't look that great today." But we have tried to understand that she is still young, and we try to understand where she is coming from.
Because our mission really is to support the kids that will become great adults in the future, hopefully if we do our jobs well, just like parents.
Here are all of our members and the sources of strength. And here are some pictures from our daily visits.
Yes, as you can see, we really do believe that this is important work because having someone to come around every week that is unbiased, to support, guide them, and whatever else you would like to call a motherly sense of longing to care for her. So, this is our mission, just to connect with the future that we have in our hands right now, children. So, now.
Once again, my name is Carly Maddock, and I am also a participant in the Hopewell Junior Buddy Program. I really enjoy this program because it allows me to gain responsibility and it allows me to grow in ways that I would not otherwise be able to grow in a classroom setting.
And I'm also Zina. It also makes me feel like mature and responsible to like care for them and stuff. So, it makes you like, they also said, it makes me feel like a parent almost. So, yeah.
Thank you for listening.
Stay there. Stay there. Come back up, please.
We're gonna ask you questions.
Come back to the podium for a moment, if you would.
Oh, yes. Little interrogation.
Absolutely not interrogation, only good stuff. Mr. Volgeman, would you like to start off with questions or comments?
Just thank you for your commitment to doing that. They are fun. My only question is, is what's been the weirdest question you've gotten?
Today?
Well, I have a picture of me and my friend on my wallpaper, and she goes, "Is that your boyfriend?" Because I have a boyfriend, and he's on my bus.
She was very excited to tell us about her first grader boyfriend.
That's great. They, they, they do not hesitate. I was asked, "How did I get so long?" when I was at my, my most recent kindergarten class. So, that's why I asked that. So, I appreciate what you guys are doing. You're being great ambassadors and helping make those connections. So, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Zink?
What has been the biggest surprise that you've had during your time doing this program?
Well, we were told that we were partnered with her because she had a bit of an attitude, and we needed to be positive role models. But she's actually been sweeter than we could have imagined. Do you, do you agree?
Um, not on the first day. Today, she was a lot better, but there were still some hurtful comments
Yes.
about my earrings, and she has drawn some self-portraits that are questionable.
So, it's just interesting to see what they come up with daily, but the biggest surprise is just how much we can get along with people and really understand people that are younger than us in ways we might not have been able to.
Mrs. Bodie?
Thank you for your presentation. It was very informative.
Thank you.
Mr. Adi?
Thank you for your presentations. Those kids look up to you, and you're like their mentors. So, you also look out for what you do because they are observing you. Okay? Thank you.
We'll be careful. Thank you.
Mr. Shaker?
What's something you've learned from your little buddy?
I've learned that even though if it doesn't look like it, like a child can look very positive and very happy, there are many things that are going on in their life that you wouldn't expect. Like, for example, she came up to me, and I was talking to her about school and her favorite class, and she goes, "Well, I could never be as good as my older brother. That's what my mom says." And I felt very bad.
Yes, it's really about learning that they are also full-developed people with their own problems, even at seven, six or seven, really. So, that's been interesting to find out, too. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Your presentation was great, and thank you for stepping up and doing something like this. Do you have the same buddy every time you go, or do you switch buddies?
Yes, but we have another partner that we normally collab with, and we have his kid come up and talk with us because our buddy and his buddy get along very well, and it makes their behavior a little bit better.
It does. They seem to get along well.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You all have displayed a lot of maturity, and I know those little guys will definitely be positively impacted by you. We appreciate the work that you're doing. And thank you for recognizing how important that work is and putting that time into it. Would you come up front and take a picture with all of us, please?
Yes.
Yes, of course. Thank you very much.
That was terrific. We'll move to number six, public comment. As a reminder, the public participation guidelines that we follow are stated in the Lakota Local School District Board of Education Policy 0169.1. The Board values public expression on educational issues. The Board of Education also values an efficient and orderly meeting, and therefore, public participation will be governed by the following rules as outlined in our policies. For our speakers, our speakers have registered to speak online prior to the meeting. Participants are allowed to comment on the specific items on the published agenda for the meeting at which they've registered to speak. They may also comment on the following specific items: Child nutrition, communications, community relations, curriculum, facilities, finances, operations, programming, safety, school board, special education, student co-in extracurriculars, technology, and transportation. Participants are not allowed to raise compliments or complaints about Lakota Local School District employees during the public participation portion of the board meeting. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Each statement is limited to three minutes. We have a timer on our screen up here. At the point that you see it go to yellow, please wrap up your comments so that when the screen goes red, your comments are finished. Each statement must be directed to the presiding officer, and no person may address or question board members individually. Please be mindful of these guidelines, and please be respectful.
Madam President, I have something to add real fast.
For our audience, a reminder to those in the audience, please respectfully listen to all points of view at the microphone. Clapping, bullying, profanity, and commenting amongst yourselves, it's distracting. It makes hearing our speakers very difficult, and it takes away from the time that we've allotted for public comment in our meetings, which is thirty minutes. Displaying posters, written signs, objects, or any other written or electronic material which may obstruct the view of our attendees, obstruct the recording of the meeting, distract either board members or the audience, or otherwise interfere with the orderly progress of the board meeting isn't permitted. If a lack of public decorum interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, I may call for recess or an adjournment to another day. We really do want to hear from you, but it's critical that there is meeting decorum to allow us to do so.
Madam President, may I add something?
Mrs. Bodie?
I understand that financial incentives are being offered to those who would come to the board meeting and speak in favor of and in support of leftist political agendas. I think it is only right that those who hope to be paid to be here let the public know when they are up to speak.
We'll move to our speakers for the evening. When I call your name, audience, please. When I call your name, I'd ask that you please line up on the wall. Remember that the time that you take getting up and down from your seat counts against the thirty minutes, so please line up as your name is called so that we can hear from as many people as possible tonight. We'll start with Mrs. Brettestegy. We'll move to Mrs. Mays, Mr. Carlin, Mrs. Richardson. Please. Please wait until the timer starts.
Sure. I did bring cheesecake. That's financial incentive.
Go ahead.
My name is Kate Brettestegy. My pronouns are she/her, and I have three children in this school district. I will start off by saying, since this keeps getting thrown around as if it were true, Darby Bodie does not speak for me and many other parents and community members in this room and throughout the district. That seems to be something that bears repeating, considering we have a group of loud people who seem to think that they are the entire voice of the community. They are not. I would like Darby Bodie to have a formal fitness-for-duty examination and be removed from all the committees she's currently on, all of them, as well as a formal censure by the rest of the board, again, for her repeated attacks on our children, our staff, our educators, and it goes without saying, our administrators. She calls people who don't share her political and religious beliefs abominations, and evil, and worse. And apparently, no investigation will ever be satisfactory for her. She is being fed vitriol to spew forth on what we are seeing as a national effort to destroy public education. Mr. Adi, several weeks back, mentioned a group approached him after the election, saying that they now had a board member in their pocket, and they wanted another one. I wonder who that could possibly be? Our school board is being bought by people who have political agendas. That's pretty clear. People who have been bought, brought in to disrupt our communities and sabotage our public education systems. Darby's own words at her speech she made at Empower U, quote, "You have obvious, in-your-face racist programs with names like diversity and social and emotional learning." Darby believes D E I and S E L are critical race theory, which is wrong. All this lends to her overtly racist, transphobic, and homophobic political agenda, and yes, it is a political agenda, as now Ms. Bodie has taken to directly linking Donald Trump's horrifying political agendas for education on her Facebook page. To repeat a quote from her, "By invading their space and showing up, they will quit on their own, and it will surely and slowly improve and eventually leave our school system," referring to teachers and educators. "I firmly believe and have seen it work for myself that spontaneous and candid access to the halls and classroom is the answer. We need legislation to support this, just like Florida. I have an ongoing campaign to gain this kind of access on a permanent basis, and I'm appreciative of any help. Anyone can make a contribution at my website, bodiforlakota.com." She's asking for financial contributions on her website. Why is that? Why, what are we funding? Is this whole thing, the board, our district, our kids, our lives, a springboard for a political career for her? Are we just here for her to use as a stepping stone? Lastly, the effort to legally remove Darby Bodie from the Lakota School Board has not stopped. We have been continuing, and we'll press on until we get the job done. We are all parents who are working towards this goal, and what time we have in our days, and we do need more signatures to move forward with her removal. So, please visit removedarbybode.com or come visit me tomorrow afternoon while I have a late lunch at Panera on Cox and Tyler's Road from twelve, from two to four, and I'll have my clipboard, and we'll be happy to get some signatures while I eat lunch. Have a great day. Thank you.
Audience. Mrs. Mays will be up next. Mr. Carlin, Mrs. Richardson. Regina McCall will follow. Audience, please. Mrs. Mays, when the timer, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. Um, I was really happy to see that we have Boy Scouts here. That is really exciting to me because the last few board meetings, I don't think they have felt comfortable in coming, and I appreciate the fact that they're here tonight. I hope they see some good things. What was experienced at the last, oh, do I need to say my name again? I'm sorry, Sharon Mays. Sorry. Was experienced at the last board meeting moved me to address the board on behalf of our Lakota teachers. I know that the divisive and negative focus lately is discouraging and demoralizing. I watched my teachers leave last, last board meeting, and it was a very sad sight. I had many come up and talk to me about how they just weren't sure what was going on with our board. I'm concerned that this will continue to have a chilling effect on the retention of our teachers and will deter others from coming here. For that reason, I did not ask our teachers to attend this board meeting or any other until we get the focus back on what is important. I have been an educator for thirty-one years. Twenty-seven of them are here at Lakota. I was proud to become a Lakota teacher, and I am proud to have been the LEA president for the last thirteen years. Our teachers are the best. They are here because they care about children and families and their profession. That means they want to make sure that our students are ready to be independent thinkers and productive citizens. We work together in this district towards that goal, and that's been apparent for the last thirteen years. We work together. For that reason, we teachers will continue to fight the negative comments, and we will do our best to teach our students. I would urge you as a board to stop the focus on personal agendas, false accusations, and attacks that are unwarranted. Don't let our excellent school district fall to such low levels. And one more thing before I step away. Any of our board members that make comments about not wanting to work with the LEA should understand that LEA is made up of approximately ninety-three percent of our Lakota-certified staff. That's over a thousand teachers. Comments like that say they don't care about that ninety-three percent. That is not good for anyone. Not our students, not our teachers, support staff, administrators, or our community. The local union is not a distant organization. The local union is not a distant organization. It is us. We are the local organization. The board will have to work with us at some point because we are not going away. Thank you.
Neither am I. Audience. Mr. Carlin, Mrs. Richardson follows, Mrs. McCall, Mrs. Pinchback Hines. When the timer starts, Mr. Carlin.
Hello, Madam President. How are you doing tonight? I just wanted to say, you know, it is kind of nice. I remember my own son coming here when he was getting his Eagle Scout, and he led the pledge the one time. It was, it was great. And it's great to see some Eagle Scouts coming here, and I think it's important for a lot of these kids to see this. This is why we're doing this. Madam President, I came here. I'm here to talk to you about the last thirteen years in Lakota. I'm going to brag up my kids a little bit before I get to the point I really want to get to. My kids started at Lakota when we had all those cuts in two thousand and ten, and it was a depressing time in, in education. Teachers were rift, programs were cut, teacher salaries were frozen for years, and yet, teachers kept doing an excellent job that they do to this day. The results? My son is on the dean's list for his first semester at Ohio Northern in the pharmacy program. My daughter's graduating and is heading to Worcester. I was told it's Worcester, not Worcester. And she's going to play soccer. She was a goalie first, and she's going to play soccer and do, and as I saw, I had to read this speech, and she's going to do something medically sciency, something like that. And she, she liked that also. She's not sure. She knows she wants to do something. But I'd love to take credit for all this. But I believe my kids never would have had the success that they have without the teachers in this district. Along with everything the teachers have done to make students successful, they have had their salary frozen, they have had larger class sizes, they have expanded their workday by more than twenty percent. And they have made one of our districts one of the most financially sound districts in the state. Lakota teachers do their job. It wasn't until a year and a half ago, when a minority of people from outside this community started to talk about how awful everything was in our district. Some of these loud voices were the ones that are clamoring in two thousand and ten, thirteen years ago. History is repeating itself, except this time, there's money behind it, and they're better organized. They talk a lot about acronyms, C R T, S E L, and it goes on. But it's really not what it's about. It is about destroying public education. Currently, in the Ohio Senate, there is a bill, Senate Bill eleven, enact the Parent Education Freedom Act, and it really should be called Gut Public Education Act. It is an expansion of the backpack bill, where is an expanding voucher program and expanded tax credits for homeschool children. There's another bill, State Bill one, Revise Education Department Act. There's a few parts of this bill that are bad, but the one I'm going to bring up is that it'll get rid of all homeschooling regulations, like there isn't that many to begin with. Both bills are ill-advised and are here to destroy public education, and I ask all of the board members of one of the largest and most successful schools in Ohio, you should immediately condemn both of these bills.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Mrs. Richardson is up. Mrs. McCall, Mrs. Pinchback Hines, Mrs. Superiorian.
Hi.
I'm sorry, wait one moment until we get the timer. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dana Richardson. Full disclaimer, I'm not paid to be here tonight. I'm here of my own volition. I've been up since five in the morning working, stopped home to see my kids, and then I came here. My husband and I have sent our kids, our two children, to Lakota School since kindergarten. That was eight years ago, and our youngest has seven years left before graduation. I've been involved in one way or another since the beginning, some years more than others, either chaperoning field trips, volunteering in the lunchroom, having a table at steam night, tutoring, reading, and helping with PTO activities. I'm hardly unique in what I've done. There are so many parents who helped to make this district a great place for our students and staff. I'm a working parent, and so I'm very fortunate that I've been able to be in as involved as I have been. Another way I've been involved is taking the time to learn about what's going on in the district beyond my kids' buildings by coming to board meetings and community conversations, not just standing here and saying what I want to say and then leaving before the meeting is over, but really taking the time to see what's happening in the district. Let me be very clear with what I've seen from this board. Darby Bodie does not speak for me or my family. Last month, another parent stood up here and asked if this is who we are as a community during a particularly awful segment of public comment. She said the chaos caused by one person is what we are allowing to happen in our community, and we need to show up because this isn't just going to pass. I paraphrase there, but Ms. McCall was one hundred percent correct. I've been showing up for eight years, and I will not allow this behavior in our district, especially by Mrs. Bodie, who has no invested interest in this community, this district, except to make a name for herself. Mrs. Bodie stated it's in a presentation to empower you that she wanted to continue her crusade of entering classrooms to make teachers so uncomfortable that they quit on their own. She stated regarding an article about teen activism in The Spark that I will, that quote, "I will continue to work to remove the kind of support within the district that makes these types of abuses possible," referring to teen activism as a form of abuse and wanting to remove support for them. "I don't see how that can be viewed as anything but a threat to staff members and student organizations." I won't tolerate that. You shouldn't either. Censure her for every online or public comment where she uses her credentials as a board member that maligns our staff and students. Since we know this won't pass on its own, and we've already had to deal with a year of putting our children on the periphery to deal with a constant derailing of progress in this district, I'm going to keep working for the removal of Darby Bodie. Anyone who won't tolerate her behavior can join the network by signing the complaint and visiting removedarbybode.com. Thank you.
Mrs. McCall is up next. Mrs. Pinchback Hines, Mrs. Superiorian, Mrs. Jackson follows. One moment, Mrs. McCall, while we reset. No, I mean, come, come back up. It's okay. Just don't start till we start the timer. Okay.
I'm back to kind of finish what I wanted to say last week.
Name, please.
For the last, Regina McCall. The last time I was here, I was talking to the community to make a plea for everyone to get involved. I did say this would not pass, but I'm here to say to the community, please get to know what's going on in the district. Please be a part of everything. Volunteer at your kids' schools. One member on this board does not represent us. And when I said last week, this is not our community, I was very serious about that. I've bumped into many people and know this is not our community as it presented itself at the beginning of the last meeting, but we have to come together and come out. Everybody does. We have different opinions, different beliefs, different races, different religions, but we have always been different. And this district has been successful under that. I'm not saying it hasn't met some challenges. I'm not saying there were not issues. I'm not saying there weren't some things that were never resolved, but for the most part, this district has come together for our kids' sake, to grow, to educate them, and to be there for them. And as a community, whether you come to a board meeting, whether you go to Panera and sign the petition, whether you volunteer at a school, whether you go in your neighborhood and walk around and get people to understand what's going on, whether you are part of the, I'm part of the lacrosse, whether you're part of football, volleyball. We as parents have to understand what's going on. We can't put our hands in the sand and act like those things are going to disappear. Those activities that we're loving for our kids, that they're thriving in, that they're being successful at, whether that's academic, whether it's athletic, those things are going to be affected if we continue at this rate. You don't have to come here, like I just said, but you can do something. Every voice counts. Every person counts, and the more pockets of people we have on board with that, the more successful this district will be, the more successful we will be at getting a board that represent who we are in this community and what we stand for. And one of the last things I would like to say is that I heard the, I can't think of her name, but she said that the Lakota, the LEA represents ninety-three percent of the people employed here. Those ninety-three percent educate our kids. They educate our kids. For every person we lose there, we lose an opportunity for our kids. That alone, to me, should be a reason for you to come out and make your point known.
Thank you. Mrs. Pinchback Hines is up. Mrs. Superiorian, Mrs. Jackson, Mrs. Hobie.
I'm Dr. Cynthia Pinchback Hines. Mrs. Bodie posted a political video of Donald Trump spewing his usual viral venom, making pernicious promises to his cultish followers. We should be wary of taking advice from a man who has no shame, no moral compass, and apparently, no way of telling the truth. Everything he proposes in that video is anti-children, anti-parents, anti-American. I can with confidence oppose every point that he makes and feel assured that the world would be a better place for us all. If you really believe it's all about our children, then act like it. The idea that it's racist to teach children about race or diversity is just absurd. This is serious, folks. While an ex-president is attempting to out-hate his rival to curry favor with his base and score points that will land him his coveted title, King of the United States, our children are suffering. Whitewashing slavery to call it involuntary servitude so that it sounds less cruel than it actually was only distorts the truth. Children seek the truth. So what's stopping parents from telling their upset children that they can identify with the abolitionists? Not the slave owners, because there were white allies who helped abolish slavery. Speaking of abolishing, Trump said he would abolish tenure for bad teachers. Am I a bad teacher because I want every child in my classroom to feel appreciated? I know what it feels like to be unappreciated. When I was a child, I was traumatized walking into a school building where members of the KKK stood in the schoolyard protesting the desegregation of our public schools. I was invisible to my teachers. They didn't care about my feelings because they didn't challenge the system of institutional racism. Throughout history, systems, policies, and laws have been designed to diminish African Americans' worth and contributions to keep us from enjoying the freedoms that the average white person enjoys in this country. Institutional racism is such a part of this country's DNA that President Lyndon Johnson once said, "If you can convince the lowest white man he's better than the best colored man, he won't notice. You're picking his pocket." Hell, give him somebody to look down on, and he'll empty his pockets for you. There's a lot of pocket picking going on in this country. So a curriculum that reflects the diversity of the students being served is what every school district needs and should want. We want a strong economy. We want a strong military, but we want to settle for a weakened education system. Our children need truth. Truth is power. Knowledge is power. Knowing African American history brings us closer to the truth about American history, the patriot that I am.
I need to ask you to wrap up, please.
And hold accountable anyone who seeks to undermine it.
Thank you. Mrs. Superiorian is up. Mrs. Jackson, Mrs. Hobie, Mrs. Cameron. Wait till the timer starts, please.
Hi, I'm Rachel Zuparian. I am a resident and a parent of two in the district. I'm here tonight to add my voice to the list of parents and community members who are proud of the work Lakota is doing to educate students who will be prepared to create their own successful futures. The lessons that my children have learned through social, emotional learning, and by attending schools that celebrate and embrace diversity will help them be adults who can function well in the workforce and society. They've had opportunities to be exposed to different viewpoints, debate issues, and develop their critical thinking skills. I assume most parents in the room would agree that they want their kids to be able to hear opinions and facts and use their logic and reasoning skills to determine where they stand on issues. But the overuse of the word indoctrination by so many people in our community makes me think that the small minority of parents are more interested in just creating a bunch of robots who think exactly like they do. What they fail to see is their way of thinking is the true form of indoctrination. Exposing students to all sides of issues is not indoctrination. It's called education. If parents trust their own parenting skills, they should be comfortable allowing their kids to hear alternative viewpoints. If they disagree with anything that's taught, they can have conversations with their children and let them know their stance. Education was never meant to advocate any agenda, and that is not what's happening in Lakota. Exposing kids to accurate historical facts, allowing them to debate about current events, and accepting all students for who they are is just called education. The only indoctrination that's happening is by people who insist that all components and curriculum and policies must live in an area that is, that follows their moral compass. We live in an area that has a lot of diversity, and insisting that all of this should be ignored is only indoctrination that's happening. This type of, this, the type of district that Ms. Bodie and others want to create is based on indoctrinating children to be hateful and irrationally fearing anyone that's different than them. If you ever decide to follow through on the C R T audit, I would ask that you keep all of this in mind. You can't conduct an audit when you haven't agreed on what you're actually looking for.
Mrs. Superiorian, I need you to wrap up.
Be specific and don't be broad.
Thank you. Mrs. Jackson, Mrs. Hobie, Mrs. Cameron, Mrs. Whitaker.
My name's Emily Jackson, and I give my opinion freely today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'd like to start with the master facilities planning. I was hesitant to bring up the details in this forum, but then decided that it was necessary. The master facilities discussions have focused on building age, chillers, roofs, space, et cetera. But there is a much more personal viewpoint for our students. My daughter at West Fresh went to class last week, and two of her classrooms had buckets for leaky ceilings every day. Band equipment was safely moved. The girls walked around the bucket in the locker room. There was even some critical thinking as to why the leaking water wasn't clear. But how much of a distraction did it cause to the students? Does the board get reports on how students are affected, or do you just look at the age of the equipment? How long would you continue having board meetings with buckets and dripping water between you? The master facilities plan must be a board priority, and the process needs to move quicker. The pace, I'm sorry, if, I think if you met with staff and students at West Fresh, you would agree the West Fresh experience is its own data point and not a pretty one. After all, West Fresh would qualify for social security if it were a person. It is ready to retire, along with the first topic of my comment time. With the time I have remaining, I will say well done to the CCP information nights hosted by the high schools. FaceTime with teachers isn't something that is typical at this age, but there were multiple teachers at every table, guidance counselors, and district staff presenting. It was a very successful evening. I saw Mrs. Schaefer there as a parent, and I think she can attest to the enthusiasm and the energy. That night piqued my curiosity as well. The Ohio Department of Education website has demographic information on CCP classes. The state average of economically disadvantaged students with college credit in two thousand and twenty-one is twenty-five percent. But at Lakota, it's five, five percent. How many more students could take CCP classes if we continue sharing the benefits? Do economically disadvantaged Lakota students know that CCP classes aren't paid for by the family? We have more capacity, and we need more support, and we need to support staff in spreading this information. This is another example of inclusion making our district better. Mrs. Bodie doesn't speak for me when she says the diversity, equity, and inclusion should die. Let's focus on what we can do when we include all students. What does that look like? In two thousand and seventeen, we were fiftieth on the list of CCP classes. Lakota was tenth in two thousand and twenty-one. Inclusion is improvement, not an impediment.
I need you to wrap up.
Congratulations to our high schools for the work over the past few years.
Thank you. Mrs. Hobie is up next. Mrs. Cameron, Mrs. Whitaker. Pause for just a moment, please.
Go ahead.
Hello. Hello, and good evening. My name is Krista Hobie. My pronouns are she and her. I am not being paid or compensated otherwise for being here. Also, as other people, I am a mother who works full-time and has two children in the district. Specifically, my younger daughter is at Hopewell Junior, and my oldest daughter is at Lakota East Main Campus, ninety-eight graduate here, and also married my high school sweetheart. So this is my, this is my home. First, I would like to give my appreciation and support to sources of strength that was here from Hopewell. Some of the other information they didn't talk about, it's an amazing program that helps support junior high students in his, her, their. It's an amazing program that helps support junior high students in his, her, their daily lives and mental health while they address suicide, bullying, and substance abuse. These children display such maturity, positivity, and empathy for those around them. My wish is for all of us adults here in this meeting and in the Liberty Township, Westchester community to have that same maturity. While in the huddle at work today, this afternoon, we were asked to read an article about empathy. The introduction stated that when we are stressed, we naturally display less empathy to others, especially strangers. The article offered up three ways that you could lower the impact of this negative stress while helping to cultivate more empathy. One was to do the five-minute favor. One of those things that you do, you don't expect anything to come back to you. You just do it because you should. And then helping out another person, just introducing, sorry, active giving back and helping someone is rewarding and expands your friendships and networks. You meet so many people just randomly helping others. And the last part was to be a loving listener. So when you listen and truly listen, not just hear, you gain more insight to that person and improve those relationships. So we, as parents, community members, school board members, all need to work together to do favors for our teachers, help our public schools, and truly listen to each other, but most importantly, to our Lakota children. Our focus should be on the students and how we can support our local public school system. We need to give, not take away from them. As my challenge to everyone here, specifically every board member, I suggest you attend the Celebration of Nations at Hopewell Jr. on February 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I would like each of the board members to take this opportunity to see how diversity within the United States allows you to learn from others' international backgrounds, but then also find those commonalities that we have together and connect us. It helps us to be more empathetic to our students, our teachers, our community members of all races, faiths, genders, and nationalities. My final request is to not ask the students, what is something that you like about living in America? This is the time to allow each student to share how he, she, they are proud of their heritage and have that courage
Thank you.
to share it with everyone.
This is Cameron. One moment. This is Cameron. We have a minute forty-two left. Please go ahead.
Okay. I'm Heather Cameron, and I'm concerned about the recent negativity around SEL. SEL encourages educators to put students over test scores. All around the country, companies are focusing on employees who exhibit emotional intelligence. Ninety-two percent of surveyed executives say clear communication and problem-solving skills are equally as important as the ability to perform the job. When executives were asked to lay out the top ten employee requirements, the results were this: complex problem-solving, critical thinking skills, creativity, people management, the ability to coordinate with others, emotional intelligence, decision-making and judgment, service and orientation, negotiation, and cognitive flexibility. Most of these are covered or addressed with SEL application. Those same executives put emotional intelligence at the same level and importance as problem-solving and decision-making. Google stated that its top qualifying criteria were all SEL-based skills. None of this is new information. In fact, many of you experienced SEL in school. It was just called something different. Character development, character education, and life skills have been implemented in schools for decades. And yes, they are all social emotional learning. Did your teachers ever pull you aside and check and see how you were doing? If so, they were teaching social emotional skills. Did a teacher help you organize your backpack or your desk? Also, social emotional skills aimed to set you up for success. Banning SEL will never stop it from being taught. It doesn't come with an outline or a book. It's impossible to ban. Everyone in here has witnessed the poor
Mrs. Cameron, that's the end of our time. Thank you. There were several other people on our list that did not get an opportunity to speak this evening. Please contact the board with your comments. We'd be happy to hear from you. We'll move on to number seven, board reports. Board Policy Committee, Mr. Volgeman.
No update this time. However, today at 3 o'clock, I did get the email from Neola that the next update will be coming out. Contains thirty policies, so it'll be kind of a long one. So that one, I'll set up that meeting with Norm, and then we'll communicate. Norm is our representative from Neola, forgive me. And I'll set up that meeting time with him to review. And then at our next committee meetings, I think scheduled for May, we'll go over those policies then.
Business Advisory Committee, Mr. Volgeman, that'd be him as well. I think we're in the process of scheduling.
Yes. Yeah, working on that creation of that committee. In fact, making some phone calls to some other superintendents to gather some ideas. Also, working with Katie Bauer. Talked with her today. She takes care of a lot of our internships for our students, and so looking at different business organizations where we might be able to pull in some of those business advisory people.
Very well. Thank you.
Open to have that rescheduled for next month if possible.
Terrific. Right, Mrs. Schaefer, Butler Tech.
We have not had a board meeting since the last time we all met here, but just another reminder on the Butler Tech Culinary Arts Program. They are doing their lunches through April 20th. However, the week of April 5th, they're closed, so don't schedule to go that week. It's Wednesdays and Thursdays from 11:00 to 1:00. If you get on the Butler Tech Culinary Arts Facebook page, you can see what the menu is as well as there's a signup genius there to do reservations. This week, it's the Taste of Nihon, I believe. I'm not familiar with that. I saw some sushi on the menu, some different food that, you know, you may not have every day. And just a reminder that our E student will be co-hosting the luncheon March 8th and 9th with the theme of being New England. And March 15th and 16th, we have a West student co-hosting, and the menu there will be Mexican themed. So hopefully, everyone can get out to Cafe Lee at Butler Tech's D Russell Lee campus and enjoy lunch. I know Adam and I have done that. I've dragged a few people out. I dragged my husband out last week. So go on out and have an enjoyable lunch there and bring cash for your tip.
I just took a group of women elected leaders there last week, and they were very impressed by the students. Anything else, Mrs. Schaefer?
No.
This is Casper, Community Engagement.
We had a community conversation last Tuesday. Finance, Mr. Zink did a wonderful job. It was small but mighty. We had about five or six community members attend, so it was actually a nice way to have, we kind of just held more of a little informal question and answer. And Mr. Zink got to do his presentation, and he did a phenomenal job. So he has his first finance community conversation under his belt because we try to do one a year. So you did a great job. We had a community engagement, a brief community engagement meeting. I don't know, Wednesday, Thursday, last week, one day. It was brief because about 10 minutes into the meeting, Mr. Volgeman and Mrs. Fuller got called away because of the bus accident. So we are going to resume that this Friday when we have all of our committee meetings. We are looking at giving perhaps some recommendations to the policy committee to try to, we're going to try to make this speaking process a little, we know it's cumbersome, the signup process, the way people speak. But our biggest concern is that we want to have a safer meeting and one that has more decorum. I'm very proud of everybody this evening because it was much better than last week or last month. Last month was really hard. We had a student threatened by a community member. We had a staff member threatened, and we just, that can't continue. So we have to figure out what we can do to make this process a little easier for everyone and, more importantly, safer for our students and staff. So we will pick up that discussion on Friday. We had a DPC meeting, Mr. Volgeman's first DPC meeting last Wednesday, where he kind of got to have a little Q and A with the DPC reps and learn a little bit more about Mr. Volgeman and what his plans are. So that's it.
So we won't have a president's council this month. That will meet again in March. And we do have two community conversations coming up on the strategic plan update. And that will be for both our community on February 23rd and then a separate one for our staff on February 23rd as well. Is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
So Community Engagement will meet Friday at 10:00 a.m.
This Friday, yes.
Yes.
All right. Diversity Committee, Mr. Volgeman.
Mr. Carter's out right now, so we have not had any meetings.
And we're planning to schedule.
Yes, once he returns.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Zink, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee meets Wednesday at 3:00 p.m., and so we're looking forward to going through a few things for February.
Thank you. Legislative Committee, Mr. Volgeman, Mr. Zink.
One of our speakers mentioned two bills that we're watching, House Bill 1, House Bill 11. Seeing those are in the early stages, a big one along with that is the budget that's part of that. Looking at the dollars that are being proposed for education, the Fair School Funding Plan, looking at inside of that plan, talking about improving literacy proficiency through some professional development dollars, also talking about assisting public and private schools with the hiring of SROs. So we'll kind of see, it's in the beginning process. We'll kind of see where that goes. Some other things that we were happy to find out, you know, Governor Dewine did a fourth round of school safety grants, and we won again. So we have won two rounds of $950,000, so we have $1.9 million now that's come through these grants thanks to the work of our safety team and advisor, Mr. Sarge and his team. The goal is to kind of put that toward access, controls, badge system, and then filtering out cameras into the buildings that have yet to have cameras. All of our buildings have cameras in the vestibule reception office area, but to extend that down into hallway areas where some of our younger buildings don't have that. So that's what I have.
So we have our first blush at the upcoming biennial budget. There will be probably no less than thirty revisions between here and there. So, you know, this is all very, very preliminary. Something that I did find interesting within the notes was there is 15 million in this current first pitch that 15 million would be earmarked through the sports gaming that we've recently started for extracurricular and interscholastic athletics. So that's kind of a new thing to the funding. So we will keep everybody up to date as we know more.
And I believe the governor is going to this week introduce into the committee his proposed budget. So that's the start of the entire process.
Madam President, I also have a comment. I have a comment.
Let's let the committee finish, and then we'll come around to you.
Okay, so legislative members. Can I not add to that?
We're still on legislative. We're still there, so hold on. You'll get your chance.
Thank you. No, I don't have anything.
Okay. I did, they did cover it. It'll be fast and furious between now and June when they actually pass the biennial budget. A couple of things, Senator Lang has requested that we pull together a meeting, and I'll try and do it through the legislative team with OSBA with all of the school boards here in Butler County, and he also would like to have some private schools present as well to have a discussion around the backpack bill or the successor to the backpack bill. And he would like to get some input from public schools on that. So we'll be setting that up, including superintendent and treasurers and legislative teams for boards. Representative Hall has also asked to meet with our legislative team, so I'll be sending out some dates to try to arrange that with everyone as well. I also wanted to let the board know that at the state board level for OSB, the executive committee met on January 25th, and we meet again at the end of February. And the OSB Southwest Committee will meet this week as a committee. This is Bodie.
So last year, there was a lame duck session where the Senate tried to pass the bill that eliminated the voice of the voter by pushing Bill SB 178 through. The bill was designed to take away the authority of our elected Ohio Board of Education and give it to the state bureaucrats under a director who would be appointed by the governor. Under this bill, school choice would be meaningless. Thankfully, the House stopped that bill. Thank you, Jennifer Gross, the Westchester rep for voting no. The bill is, however, being submitted as SB Senate Bill 1 in 2023. My concerns are that Dewine will not protect our girls from transgender females competing in girls' competitive sports or from the racist indoctrination in the education system. Dewine is currently in support of mandating daily suicide prevention in our schools. This seems like a good thing on its face, but there is also only so much time in a day and honestly, no time for a program that is really just another move from those who think they know better to usurp more parental rights and responsibilities that further separate parents from their children. These prevention programs call for, among other things, a peer-to-peer responsibility for finding those who are suicidal, addicted to drugs and alcohol, and charging students with the responsibility of finding those who are socially isolated, whatever that means. These appointed students will then tell an adult in the school environment, and this trusted adult will get the child connected to the help they need. The psychotherapy carried out by administrators, faculty, and students is insanity. This is not just our children's, this is just not our children's responsibility. It's nothing a rational person would attempt to put on them. Most parents want their child to be responsible for getting through their school career with good grades and ensure they graduate. That's stressful enough, and again, there is only so much time in a day. We need to stop this new assault. Please contact your Ohio State Representative in the Senate and tell them to vote no on SB 1. Thank you.
We'll move on to the Safety Committee.
Would you like, I'm sorry, Julie. I had a question, Adam. Do you know with the gaming dollars that you mentioned for extracurricular, if that's the planning, other funds, or is that supposed to be in the proposal, at least additional funding?
It was supposed to be new.
Okay. Also, to let you know, Butler Tech will be going up to Columbus to meet with our legislative group and our representatives from the county up there. So we have four meetings, I believe, scheduled so far. And then there's also an evening meeting because it's through the Career Tech, it's a Career Tech seminar. So different reps from around the whole state will be there as well. So hopefully, we'll have a good opportunity to get involved there. Yeah, I'll leave it there.
All right. Anything further? Move to Safety Committee, Mr. Andee.
All right. On Safety Committee, we want the community to be aware that we take safety very, very serious. Inasmuch as we do our meetings without a community being involved, but you need to know that safety is very, very important. We want every student, staff, administrators, board members to feel free and safe doing their job or performing their duties. And one of the things that we do is we adopt the ALICE Plan, which is alert, lockdown, information, counter, and escape. The school district takes this very seriously, and from time to time, we do programs that help so that students know what to do in instances of incidents in the school. And we also need to remember that last meeting, we voted to approve our SROs, and that is another move that this district and the board has taken, and it's very, very serious. So the community should be aware that safety is our number one priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andee. Anything else on safety?
Safety will meet Friday at 12:00 p.m. There will be a notice that'll go out that that will be held right here in the media center.
And that will be executive session, I believe.
Didn't the notice already go out?
The notice went out, but I had it referenced in D and E, and it will be over here. The other meetings will be in D and E, and then we'll come over here for the Alice training.
And that will be executive session.
That is correct. Yes.
All right. Anything else on board reports? That's it. We'll move to number eight, Administrative Report. Mr. Volgeman, I believe you're going to update us on discipline.
Yes. The first board meeting of each month, when school is in session, I plan on giving an administrative report to the board, but also for the community to, and stakeholders to understand some of the stuff that's happening inside of our schools. You know, school discipline is always an interesting topic at times. When it's quiet, things are good, but when things tend to go wrong, people start to wonder what's going on. And so first of all, we do have a code of conduct that is found online in our Student Behavior section of the website. It's also our Administrative Guideline 5500. We review this every year. And currently, right now, it's under review from our building administrators to see if there are any areas of concern that aren't being addressed. Basically, you know, what are the gray areas you're seeing? One example of kind of how we go around looking for that is we had to add two years ago an update into Rule Number Seven with tobacco called Beetle Nut. And a lot of people ask, what in the world is Beetle Nut? And a lot of people ask, what in the world is Beetle Nut in rule number seven? Uh, well, this came two years ago, uh, as a result of finding out trends, not, not in our school, but from Neola. That Beetle Nut is a stimulant drug that may contain tobacco and other additives that kids would chew on. Um, and so we had to make sure that we let people know that that was not permitted in school. So it's doing those yearly reviews of things of that nature that, that we try and stay on top of. Uh, our policy provider, Neola, uh, makes revisions to our code of conduct, uh, with any changes in the law that may come up. So if we have, uh, talked about an update coming up, if there's any changes in student code of conduct, they would inform us, we would update. Uh, once we get things back from our administrators or any gray areas, we always send that off to legal. Make sure that we're stating it the right way and, uh, following all student due process rules. Uh, big, big word that gets thrown a lot is the term bullying. Uh, a lot of people are concerned about what that is and what does that look like? Uh, we do keep those stats on our website. If you go to our website, you will see under safety security, you'll see a bullying prevention tab. Uh, this is required part of House Bill two seventy-six, which is the anti-bullying. And also House Bill nineteen, which is dating violence. You'll see cases that we have to log on there going all the way back to the two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year. Uh, also on that site, you will see that, uh, we have forms on there that we always ask for that to be filled out. And some people say, well, I know I filled out a form, but I don't see it showing up on your website. Well, because what we do and we stated on top of our form that we will investigate, uh, what you are claiming to be bullying and we will interview students and find out. And if it does not rise to the level bullying, by definition, then we won't mark it as bullying. However, we will not be indifferent either. We will go ahead and put in preventative measures if there is an issue between kids. Um, you know, some people want to say bullying, a kid bumps into another kid in the hallway and he says, watch it. That's not bullying. Um, that's just, uh, maybe some kids say some other mean things instead of watch it. Some profanities. Well, that's not bullying. That's, that's bad behavior, but that doesn't rise to the level of definition of bullying. Doesn't mean we won't do anything about it. It just means we won't tag it as a bullying situation. Um, and we will, once again, try and do preventive measures with those situations. And we just don't ignore those things and say, kids will be kids. Uh, it's okay. No, we, we always moving seats, uh, maybe it's, uh, positions in the classroom, changing lockers, uh, where you sit in the cafeteria, where you are on the bus, things of that nature. We, we always try and want to make sure that our kids, uh, don't have to deal with the stress and pressures of, uh, being in school. We, we know what that is. Uh, another thing to keep in mind is legal boundaries and special ed rules. Uh, as you know, a couple of years ago, there was a, uh, change in law that you cannot suspend a student in grades kindergarten through third grade, uh, for any violation of the code of conduct with the exception of significant danger to school, school violence acts. Um, that those, that is the only level that would allow you to suspend a K three student from school. So with that, uh, that pushes us to look for other alternatives. And how can we, uh, help the situation? Cause a lot of times just sending a kid home for three days doesn't solve the problem. Uh, we want to fix the issue. Uh, the goal of discipline is to change the behavior. Uh, not to just do something for fun, but we want to change the behavior. And so along with some of those legal boundaries, you also have, uh, IDEA law, which deals with our students with disabilities. Um, they can't be removed from school for more than ten days. Especially if their violation of the code of conduct is in direct relation to their disability. And so you cannot suspend them out or try to expel them, uh, when it is a manifestation of their disability. And so we have to have those hearings if we have some bad situations in which our kids have done some things that brings them to the table for a suspension or a recommendation for expulsion. And the IEP team would have to meet with parents and the team and make a decision whether it was part of the student's disability or not. And then that will determine kind of what happens from that point forward. Uh, if it's determined that it's part of the student's disability, then this student is to return to class, uh, as they were. Um, and I know some people don't understand that. They don't understand why a kid can have an outburst maybe one day and be back in class. Uh, because there may be some protections for certain students that we can't discuss. Uh, those are further protected. We cannot talk about other students. And so a lot of times parents want to know, well, what about the other kid? And we can't talk about other children. We're more than happy to talk about your child, but we cannot talk to other parents about other children. Uh, wouldn't want someone to come in and get the skinny lowdown on my kids, uh, from somebody else and nor would we do that for somebody else. But I also understand the heighteness of a parent and that care and that concern. Um, but we also have to follow the law. And so it's having those conversations of trying to help people understand, uh, what that looks like. Um, one thing that we've instituted this year is we're using new program, uh, branching minds. It's helping us collect some data on student behaviors. Uh, Ohio mandates through PBIS law that we have to be proactive and seeing where problems are put and put in some supports in those areas of concern, uh, that are verified with the data. Uh, each building then, uh, tries to work together, uh, to take some of that behavioral data that we're collecting with academic data and try and help those kids, uh, where are they struggling? Um, some, some of the things, for example, you may see, uh, one of our schools saw, uh, discipline was on the rise in the morning. And so notice that maybe coming off the bus, uh, a little too excited. Kids ramped up, spent a lot of time in the morning worrying about discipline. And so the institute was called a morning meeting. And that's where each classroom would take five to 10 minutes just to make sure everybody centered on the day's activities. What do we need to talk about? What does everybody need to get out? Well, is there anything we need to talk about so that we can move on for, for our day? Instead of them dealing with it while we're just pushing them through the day of taking that time and trying to be proactive and preventative from having more discipline incidents. Uh, we also do, uh, some work to make sure that we are offering some positive support, such as a lot of people see our E plus R equals O signs of trying to encourage kids to event plus response equals outcome. And we talk about controlling your R. Uh, it's a lot of times we can't control the events that happen to us. Uh, but we can't control our response to it. You can't control what someone's going to say to you. You can't control how they're going to treat you. All you can control is your response to it. And so we kind of use that to try and help kids as well. And a lot of times when we do have kids in the office for violations, some of our principals do a really good job of saying, well, let's talk about your event. Now, what could you have done differently? That would have changed your outcome. Because you chose this way, now you're here in my office. What could you have done differently? Well, if I wouldn't have done that, then what would happen? I wouldn't be here in the office. Okay. So it's something that you can control. So we look to educate through that process. Like I said, the goal of discipline isn't to get a pound of flesh. It's to change the behaviors. And so that's what we, we want to try and do. Um, one thing that we've done this year new is our student wellness coordinator, Megan Cameron, has been coming to the table, uh, with us when we have students who unfortunately violate, uh, rule twenty-one, and that's a drug and alcohol violation. And what we've done is we've added a layer of giving them help. Uh, for them to finish out their disciplinary consequences. Part of that program is they have to finish family counseling before that student can return. Uh, we mandate that they do two hours of student counseling and then two hours of family counseling. Cause what we want, we want to help the kid. Is this a use or is this an abuse situation? We care more about the kid's health and longevity. If they're starting to do these things while at school, while in school, we need to get them help. We'll take care of the discipline consequence, but part of that is adding in that layer of also helping the child. Uh, once again, once they serve their time, they're going to come back to school. But we want to make sure that they do it the right way. And one way we do that as well is we are trying to have more and more what we call re-entry meetings. Let's say a student does, uh, does commit a violation of code of conduct and we have to suspend him for five days. Well, what we've done in the past, sometimes unfortunately, is they come back on day five and they just walk right into school and go to first bell and we assume everything's okay. Well, there's a lot that goes on for a student when that happens is they're coming in back after five days. Um, they have the right to come back to school and just be that student, be focused on their education. And so we want to have a re-entry meeting. We want to make sure that they're getting reconnected. We want to make sure they're staying up on their academics. We just don't want to say, okay, good luck. See ya. Don't do it again. Uh, but kind of build that bridge of, hey, you know, you made a mistake. We all make mistakes. Let's talk about how you do it on your grades. Let's make sure our attendance stays up. If you have any problems, come see me. Uh, I always, I always use the analogy back in the eighties and nineties, there was a big fight promoter called Don King. And, um, there's a whole bunch of Don Kings walking around in the schools that will tell you, hey, go ahead, do this, do that, do this, do that, and they will agitate you. And then when trouble hits fan, you get in trouble and they back away and they don't have anything to do with it. And so it's trying to prevent that from happening to them as well. Even though they think, well, I didn't do anything wrong. So yeah, you did. You're, you're stirring the pot over here. Uh, you're causing just as much of a disruption to school as the actual event. And so we handle those as well and, and try and manage seventeen thousand kids coming in with seventeen thousand different opinions coming from, you know, seventeen thousand households where we handle things differently and we do things differently of trying to understand, well, while you're here with us, this is what we need for you to do. Uh, and these are the rules we need for you to follow. And we have some high expectations that, that they, that they do. And for the most part, our kids are great. They, they do a fantastic job. Uh, and we have some kids that struggle. Uh, we have some kids that, um, and I think we even heard about it. You don't know what some of the kids are coming from. And so sometimes they act out out of frustration of stuff that they're, they're a victim of. They, they didn't choose some of the circumstance in which they're coming to school that day. You don't know that maybe their parent lost a job. And so they have to watch their brother and sister the night before. And they're frustrated because they couldn't get their homework done and they come in and the teacher's like, where's your homework? And they go, you don't understand. I know you need to do your homework and they, the frustration comes out. And it's understanding that and trying to have that conversation. And so it's also balancing a conversation with a six-year-old and a conversation with an eighteen-year-old. Uh, because if one of them violates the same code of conduct, the eighteen-year-old probably knows a little bit more what they're doing and saying than the six-year-old. And so it's understanding that balance of, well, you know, I think some people, if, if a six-year-old does something real bad to their child, they want them excommunicated off, never to come back in public school again. It's like it's a six-year-old. We, we need to help them learn. We need to help them do school. Eighteen-year-old may be a different case. They, they should know better by then and, and that's a different conversation. So it's, it's this balance, just like at home. You know, certain kids, you know, I, I have certain, my kids are all respond different ways to me. Uh, when I was a coach, I knew I could look at one kid, kind of give him the eye. And he'd be okay. The other kid, if I said anything negative, he'd crumble. Another kid wanted me to coach him up and challenge him. And so it's understanding that too, when the kids come into your classroom every day and trying to balance all that, maintain an orderly school, get them in, get them to lunch, get them on bus and head them home, uh, and take care of any issues that arise. And always if, if kids feel uncomfortable, if they, they don't feel things are right, go to an administrator. Please tell somebody right away. Parents, if you have concerns, uh, call your teachers, email the teachers, call them, call your principals. We want kids to feel safe in their school. If they hear things, share with us. It's, uh, it's the first line of defense. If your kids hear something, tell us right away, even if you're not sure, let's make sure and we'll follow through. So that, that's, I know that's a lot in a short time, but that, that's, it, it's a big load to carry and our administrators do a really good job of balancing all the things I tried to talk about and share and to make sure that we continue to get kids in school. Give them the education they need, give them that diploma so they can walk across the stage and be whatever they want to be.
That was a lot to unpack, Mr. Vogelmann. Thank you very much. Um, and where I have asked Mr. Vogelmann to do an update for us on discipline periodically. So that we're able to, to do that, uh, to hear from him on that. Questions, comments, Mrs. Bodie?
Can I add to not only just discipline, but how we are, um, really working on striving to ensure that their grades are improving as well and the focus on their education. Besides just.
We know it's important that we have discipline on a building, so the focus can be on, and in our classrooms, so the focus can be on student achievement. So
there's just so much time in the day. So I just want to make sure that this isn't overriding. You know, the teacher's day on teaching the classroom and ensuring that, that children get an education.
Any questions or comments?
I, you sort of mentioned it, Rob, with partnering with the school. If you do see an issue, I know, uh, letting too much information out. That is one of my biggest parental regrets. I had a situation with one of my kids where I did not involve the school soon enough. Cause I'd listened to a bullying expert that basically said, you need to let the kid handle it and, and we tried that, but I let, I tried that too long. And as soon as I looped the school in because they had no idea that there was a situation, the, the perpetrator was very good at doing it behind all the adults' backs and, and, and expert at that. But as soon as I made the, uh, staff aware, they were able to nip it in the bud and I should have trusted them with that sooner and that they would have known how to handle it best. So I would just encourage other parents to make sure that you do form that partnership. Again, neither side can do it on their own, but it needs to be a partnership together to make sure any of those discipline issues and challenges in the classroom are handled appropriately. So that would be my
Great.
thought to share with others. Don't make the same mistake I did.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Mrs. Casper, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Vogelmann.
Mr. D.
Oh, thank you so much.
Uh, I have had a lot of issues raised, which I brought to your attention, Mr. Vogelmann, in terms of staff safety and some of those situations and student safety around discipline issues. So I appreciate your focus and working on that to make sure that we do have a safe and running and all the way around. Thank you for the update. Board, we move to number nine, board action items. And I am looking for a motion to approve the interim superintendent contract for Mr. Vogelmann. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Discussion?
Yes, I would like to, uh, discuss that I asked for an addition, um, for morality clause to be added to this agenda. And I'm going to say that it is very sad that the board is not, um, representing the community who has responded with the past, who has provided communication with the past superintendent and, um, disappointed that you are making the decision to protect the superintendent superintendent instead of the students of Lakota again. And what I was wanting to add were the parties, so under contract termination, a superintendent contract may be terminated by mutual agreement, retirement, disability or death of the superintendent termination accordance of, with the law of Ohio or failure of the superintendent to maintain a valid educational license. And the part that I'm asking the board to add is the parties expressly, expressly agree that in addition to any other good and just cause as defined under Ohio Revised Code, section thirty-three, nineteen sixteen, the superintendent may be terminated for any of the following reasons. A, any grand jury indictment, conviction or plea of guilty or no contest, also known as non-lo contendre or of by, as applicable, superintendent for any felony or other crime of dishonesty, dishonesty or moral turpitude, soup, C, or B, superintendent's failure to abide by the board's published policies and procedures in all material respects. C, illegal possession or use of any controlled substance. Or D, other actions by the superintendent that cause adverse effects on the reputation of the Board of Education, the Lakota School District and/or their relationships with the Lakota student, parents, faculty, staff and suppliers. And, um, I don't think that would be an unreasonable request.
So, Mrs. Bodie, this was discussed thoroughly in executive session and without violating executive session, I will say that I believe it was given very thorough consideration by the entire group sitting up here.
That's what's an executive session.
But because it was an executive session, we are not going to have a conversation here. His contract will, once it's approved, be public record and so that will be available to the public, but the discussion around it is not available. So I have a motion and a second, uh, for Mrs. Schaefer and Mr. D. Any further discussion?
We will look, we look forward to, should your contract pass, working with you as our superintendent. So thank you for being willing to take on this role.
Hearing nothing further, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
No, but you forgot to also state what we were voting on.
Please continue, Mr. Zink, with Mrs. Casper.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Thank you, board. We'll move to board evaluation. And Mr. Vogelmann, welcome officially.
Thank you.
We move to the board evaluation. Um, board, as I mentioned at our last meeting, we have an opportunity through the Southwest region of OSBA to participate. And it's completely voluntary in an A to Z school board effectiveness, uh, checklist. And it is, there are not too many tools that are available to school boards to do a self-evaluation. So four board members chose to participate. I appreciate that. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. If you did participate in this, then please stay for a moment after the meeting to put your signature on the document so it can be forwarded on. So as a highlight, uh, the board has, was committed, this is for twenty twenty-two, to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction. They established a collaborative relationship with their staff and with the community. Collaborated with business leaders to develop a consensus for student success. Updated continuously evaluated policy, practice fiscal accountability, participated in professional development. There were other things on the list, but those are just a few highlights. Areas that the board sees for improvement would be using data to drive continuous improvement and decision-making. Areas that the board sees for improvement would be using data to drive continuous improvement and decision making. Maintaining high academic standards in the midst of budget challenges. We've had several conversations uh about the need to get back to student achievement and what we believe is the first and foremost priority. And that the board uses student data for school improvement and the administration and staff develop and implement plans to improve student achievement. So I think we all feel that there's a need to really put a stronger focus on that. There's also the option to list some of the things that the board feels that they did accomplish during twenty twenty-two. And I'll share those with the board and then we will move on. And again, please stay after and sign the document. Demonstrated fiscal responsibility, accountability, and transparency by again finishing the fiscal year with a balanced budget for the tenth year in a row. Focused on continuous improvement by evaluating and planning a means to utilize facilities more effect more efficiently while providing transparency to our community and the management of facilities. Demonstrated responsiveness and accessibility to both the internal and external communities by holding community conversation opportunities throughout the year, including several events to gather input on the master facilities plan. Continued engagement with the business community to strengthen workforce development opportunities for our students to include cybersecurity academy, incubator program, and internships. And finally, maintained continuity and leadership and as a whole, worked as a team through challenging circumstances. So, Board, thank you to those who participated. There's also a list attached of the policies as part of the requirements um that we worked on throughout the year and updated. So, thank you for that.
May I make a comment?
Mrs. Bodie, you recognized?
As you all know, I do not see that the OSBA has an agenda that lines out with what I believe are the community's values. They support the very programs I was elected to help get removed. We are all very busy and I did not participate in any event that designed that was designed to prop up and legitimize the OSBA.
Would anyone like to respond?
Do you know what the OSBA mission and vision statement is, or you just don't like them? Do you know what their vision and mission statement is?
I went to a meeting last year and this year, and again, they are still teaching racism, and I will not be part of
Do you know what their vision and mission statement is? Because that's what you're constantly referring to, their agenda, their mission. Do you know what it is?
Okay. I'm curious.
And the other camp audience.
Part of the OSBA, so I'm on where
I want to capital conference, so
Well, all I see
to go, so you are.
Well, all I see is the racism that they are teaching our teachers and our superintendents.
We're going to give Mr. D the floor. Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor. Mr. D.
Um. So when we talk about OSBA. It's, I think I saw some concern last year, twenty twenty-two, we had a lot of distractions. We would have achieved more than what we have enumerated. I'm not going to allow another distraction in twenty twenty-three bringing things that are not relevant. OSBA. If you if you go to OSBA, whatever you're looking for. I I don't know what, uh, speaking to the president, I don't know what Ms. Bodie was looking for at OSBA. But when I went to OSBA. I learned a lot how to run meetings, how to know how legislative issues that came up. And I also learned from school districts that are doing very well in the area that I need improvement in Lakota School District. I am not a board member of other two school districts. I'm a board member of Lakota School District, and I have a goal. Student achievement. Number one. We have seventeen thousand five hundred students. Those are going to be my focus. Parents, if you have any issue regarding your kid. Whatever it is, it's your responsibility to bring it to the board. And listen to your kids, be parents, let teachers be teachers. Teachers cannot be parents. Let them teach and they you be parents. Listen to your kids. If there's anything you do not understand, like Mr. Vogelmann said. I love what he said. Students achievement is going to be his focus, and that's what I want. So all these distractions has to stop. So that we move on and focus on kids and their education and their future. If you go anywhere, wherever you want to look for, everywhere you can find whatever you're looking for. So I know what I'm looking for on OSBA. And I'm going to continue to learn, to develop myself and to be productive to this school district. And we have to be very careful because we're we're setting precedents. We have opportunities to lose teachers. Or even other people that may want to come to this school district might be afraid and will not come here. So let's stop all the distractions, speaking to the board. And let's focus on Lakota students.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mrs. Bodie.
If you want to learn how to be a bad board member, join the OSBA.
Arrogance is unbelievable.
I do think it's important to remind people that one of the, I I think there are only two districts in the state of Ohio that do not belong to the Ohio School Board Association. Is not a political organization and is intended to provide professional development. Um, for instance, at Capital Conference, if you are a district that has done some phenomenal program that's boosting your student achievement. You can come and talk to other districts about what you've been able to do and how you were able to accomplish it. That's not a political issue. That's what we're all involved in. I think there are districts that do focus on social emotional learning. They focus on other issues. If that's what you want to learn about, you can go to those sessions. But I will say, and I think we've had this conversation before about Capital Conference, that out of the hundred at least opportunities that were available and each school board member can choose which sessions they go to. There were very few, possibly count them on one hand, that had anything to do with what might be classified as CRT or anything along those lines. So you have the option to go to any kind of professional development. There are many opportunities throughout the year, certainly not just Capital Conference and not just OSBA. I'm in my sixteenth year and I still feel that I am in a continuously learning process. Issues change, legislation changes, programs change, opportunities for kids change. But the focus still has to be on what's best for our kids. And hopefully, we all participate in professional development that keeps that at the forefront. So thank you to the board members that have done professional development for that purpose. Really appreciate it. If there's no further discussion, we'll move on. I got treasures, recommendations, number ten, action items. I'm looking for a motion to approve the board minutes. And I am looking for a motion um for approval of an invoice for payment in accordance with board policy sixty-three twenty. And then now. Do I have a motion? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Casper.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Mr. Zink, would you like to explain the then and now for a moment?
Yeah, the then and now was part of the fiscal year end process where we were closing down purchase orders and this was um this was a purchase order that got closed down that still had an invoice outstanding on it. So in order to process the payment, we have to have a board approval on that. So it was some uh part of fiscal year twenty-two.
Any questions about that? And then board minutes that are approving are for January twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board, we move to number eleven, the superintendent recommendations for action items. Approval of personnel items, approval of a field trip, approved donations, and approved easements. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Schaefer, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Bodie, thank you. Mr. Vogelmann.
Uh, just a couple of points I want to point out. If you see the administrative staff resignation, um, Ms. Mary Brophy is going to retire at the end of this year. So we are thrilled for her, sad for us. Um, but a fantastic lady. Uh, she was all for my children's ECS principal. So um happy for her uh to see whatever that next chapter for her is in her life. Um, always thankful for donations coming in. Appreciate our parent organization help helping us out. And then finally, the uh easement uh approval, uh, looking at putting a roundabout in front of West Freshman entrance. Um, I've been told that that will take place over the summer if approved. Um, we still have access to that campus. If you know, there's a gravel road that kind of goes uh behind the uh two softball baseball stadium right there, that'll still be available for people to get in and out during the summertime. Uh, but they want to put this roundabout in and they've reassured us that uh with master facilities plan, if that site is used for a future uh larger scale building, the roundabout would be able to to handle that at that location. So uh work well with our Butler County Engineers Office and appreciate them uh uh giving us the heads up and and working with us on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Vogelmann. Any discussion?
What, Mr. Vogelmann, did they say when they are planning on starting that? It's always such a close
Summer.
Close finish to that beginning of school.
Sorry, I don't have an exact date.
Anything else?
Uh, Mrs. Brophy. She deserves retirement, thirty-five years as an educator, but man, will she be missed.
She will be. She has influenced a lot of lives. Any other discussion? Hearing nothing, go ahead, Mr. Zink with a local.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board, we'll move to closing comments. Mr. Zink, we're going to start with you and go this way.
Well, I want to start by congratulating Mr. Vogelmann for being the interim superintendent. Look forward to working with you. Um, I also want to let everybody in the audience know we have a little bit of a lag when we're doing the um public participation, the three minutes. Sometimes it doesn't come up just quite as quick as I hope for it to, and I'm trying to time it. So thanks, everyone, for bearing with me on that. Uh, I did have lunch at Cafe Lee for the first time with Ms. Schaefer. That was a really neat experience, and I hope that I can take the Treasurers Office team there. That's all I think I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Vogelmann.
Uh, once again, thank you to uh uh giving me the opportunity to serve the district in this fashion. Uh, appreciate those again who have supported me through this. Um, all I gotta say is what a start. Um. As I started out helping out, snow day, two hour delay. Um, and then also a bus, a bus crash that happens. Um, I will say this, kudos to Peterman. Lee River Township Fire Paramedics, Butler County Sheriff's Office deputies, and Van Gordon Administration and Staff and the students and parents involved. Um, when I got there, everyone did a great job. Uh, some kids were crying. It was an emotional event, obviously, but everybody stayed calm. They were respectful. They were very helpful. Uh, kids uh were able to be reunited with their parents on site due to our use of our Raptor uh system. We were able to have parents sign on my phone to release them to the uh be child be released to the parent right there on site for the parents that had showed up. We didn't have that two years ago, but now we have that feature. Um, we were able to transport the kids back to the building, get them reunited with their parents. Uh, the bus driver showed up to work the next day because she wanted to make sure her kids were okay. So and with the next morning, we had our crisis care team there at Van Gordon to help if any kids wanted to talk about if they had any traumatic feelings about riding the bus again. And I believe within two days, just about every child was back on the bus again. And just a a a point of clarification, our driver was not at fault. So um our driver did an excellent job. We got an email from a parent who also does transportation up in the Dayton area and said he was thrilled to hear how the bus driver worked with the kids to keep them calm and safe during that event. And so very, very happy with with how that turned out uh in comforting our kids and taking care. Uh, high school parents, hopefully you work with your child to get them registered for next year's courses because the window's closed. Hopefully, you've taken care of that. But I say that as a reminder, is junior high is coming up next. So if you have a seventh or eighth grader coming up next year. We're living in that time where we're working in two different school years right now. We're wrapping up this school year, but we're starting to plan for next school year with registrations, course selections, um, and we continue to work on that. So good luck to our winter sports teams as some of them in our junior high have already wrapped up their season with some tournaments. And our high schools are starting their tournament play as well and one final. No, thanks. My wife and kids are here. Uh, I I just, um. Their uh their support means the world to me and um I'm proud to be their dad and I'm proud to be a husband for you all. Um, sad thing is, I I sit here and think to myself, I'm at risk for saying who they are. I don't mean to be funny with that.
It's not being funny.
But I care too much about them. And I have two in college that couldn't be here unless they snuck in somewhere. But um they're a product of Lakota Schools and I'm proud to be their superintendent too. So, thank you.
Mr. Vogelmann, uh, it it makes me very sad that you have to worry about that, but and I also hope that they don't have to come to board meetings to get a chance to see you. So we'll have to work on that. Thank you. Mrs. Bodie.
Isaac, can go ahead.
Mrs. Bodie.
I thought we were starting that way.
She said this way.
Mrs. Bodie, do you have closing comments? Otherwise, we'll move on.
Yes, I do. Thank you. All right. So number one, um, safety is important to everyone and trying to stop or reduce suicides is a good idea. You would argue that is not. There are a lot of good ideas and teaching to respect and look out for one another is also a good idea. Teaching people to love each other is a good idea. But good ideas are no longer good when the idea is used to disguise a bad one. I encourage everyone to read the Safe Students Act and all related materials. Please try, if you can, to grasp the enormity and arrogance of the mission. Just the organize organizational aspects of these programs would tell a rational person that it's a bad idea before they even get around to questioning the aspects that one would think require a PhD to grasp. To say it's intrusive is an understatement. They're talking about mobilizing literature, thousands of of participants in a grand scheme to have every student, faculty, member, and administrator psychoanalyze each other in an effort to curtail suicides. I agree with those who say the program is insane and would create far more stress and anxiety than it could ever pretend to relieve. Teachers and administrators do not have the education and children and adolescents are simply not emotionally equipped to per to participate. See the Salem witch trials. This is nothing more than a blatant and shamelessly put together scam to further separate parents from their children and fund another all powerful association of profiteering nonprofits to leach onto the coppers of the district and further the progressive power grab for our children. Prevention teams in every building, approved training, approved credentials, approved research, when your child should seek help and why, who to reach out to, how to make contact, anonymous reporting. And nowhere in this Safe Student Act, nowhere does it say call your mother, nowhere does it say call your father, nowhere does it say call home. To really understand what it this is all about, that tells you everything. The encroachment into parenting is pure evil and we need to put it to an end. It is comparable to the Nazi handbook and a tactic of the communists. It is absolutely evil. There is barely enough time in a day to comprehensively teach reading, writing, science, history, arithmetic, and critical thinking, which I might add, we are not doing the greatest job of. Yet this stuff is what goes get shoved down our throats on a regular basis. The psychological analysis of children is the job of the parents and their private professionals. And I would also like to add that um the union, unfortunately, the the teachers' union is known for pressuring teachers to join and supports teachers who want to indoctrinate our children. And it was posted online, the strength of a union depends on you getting involved, know what is being considered. And any changes that are coming your way, attend the monthly Lakota Board meeting and represent your building. So teachers were asked to to be here. If you attend in person
Audience, please.
Complete the raffle registration above. The attendance will be open for each board meeting from Monday, even though Wednesday, even evening through Wednesday of the week. And I also heard the statement that someone is not going away. Well, neither am I.
Audience. I have really appreciated the respect and decorum that you've demonstrated thus far. Let's keep it up till the end of the meeting, please. That does not indicate agreement. Mrs. Schaefer.
Um, a- again, I my colleague, Mrs. Casper, will be better equipped to uh discuss the whole concept of suicide prevention, but I just will have to say when it's stated that parents just care about kids getting good grades and learning, reading, and writing, and arithmetic. I'm very proud of my kids' academic achievement, and that is absolutely imperative. But if they were dead, it really wouldn't matter how much reading, writing, or But if they were dead, it really wouldn't matter how much reading, writing, arithmetic they knew. So I think we need to look at what comes first to make sure that everything else can come after and that they can have a long and healthy and productive life. So I'll let you get into the particulars of all of that. Thank you to our bus driver for exhibiting such amazing care of our students. Again, I read, but I don't believe anything I read anymore, that she had actually stopped the bus before they were hit. So you know, I think that to have the foresight managing, I already think it'd be impossible to be a bus driver with all those kids in commotion and driving so that she was able to manage all of that, see what was coming, get the bus stopped and, and then be able to react so well for all the students. A huge thank you. As was mentioned, college credit plus, I believe I have the deadline correct. If your child intends to do that, you need to have a declaration done with the schools by April first. That is not a Lakota deadline, that is not a flexible deadline. That is a must do if you intend to have your child participate. It is a great program. We have amazing choices. Again, I bragged on how much my own kids have been able to take advantage of that. My daughter just this week met with an advisor and he was like, you were able to do a full engineering degree with two minors in eight semesters. Like, how did you do that? And she's like, because my high school was amazing and the opportunities that they offered me and that's how I was able to do that. So I'm so thankful for all the offerings that our curriculum department and the entire team has put together to give our kids a leg up in the next phase of their life, which is something I, I used to think all of us were inclined to hope for. Our staff. I am thankful for what our staff does every day. And when I read on social media or actually saw a video about that, how we need to rid out, weed out and rid our school district of teachers who are indoctrinating our children. And we have to show up in their space and, and shine a light on their terrible behavior. And this is the only way to weed out and force out these terrible teachers. These are the teachers that invest their life and time and energy into creating amazing futures for our children and allowing them to be successful in life. And the fact that I feel like they right now feel like they're being hunted for what they might do wrong or one word that they state incorrectly breaks my heart. And I don't think it allows anyone to have their best performance. You know, I, I think of myself, like when I see a police officer driving down the road, I may be going to speed limit, I'm doing everything, my car is registered, I've got license insurance, but it still makes me nervous, like, oh my goodness, what if I do something wrong? And to live that way twenty-four seven right now as a staff member, I can't even imagine the stress that that creates. And then we're constantly talking about student achievement. At the same time, we're putting so much pressure on every word, every interaction, every debate. Our, our education system is changing. What I had to memorize no longer has to be memorized because somebody can look it up here in two seconds. But what we have to teach is critical thinking skills, but that requires debate. And if I were a staff member right now, I'd be a little nervous about those debates and that's not healthy. So I just want to say that I hope we can support our staff in creating the critical thinkers that our employers and we need as the doctors and caregivers that we're going to have tomorrow. I want them to be able to have independent thought, critical thinking, and make good decisions and not just be able to memorize things. So I will leave it with that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Mrs. Casper.
My day job is I work for a nonprofit that deals with peer-to-peer suicide training. So let me tell you some statistics. These kids are talking to friends about suicide anyway. We equipped our students to know and to identify when someone is struggling. We teach them to be kind. We teach them empathy. We teach them that mental illness isn't a stigma, that it's okay to not be okay. So I'm okay with taking a few minutes out of the day if it's going to save a life. And since this nonprofit started in two thousand and sixteen, countless lives have been saved because someone felt comfortable enough saying to their friend, I'm not okay. Because someone felt comfortable enough to reach out to a staff member saying, I'm not okay. And I'm afraid it's tell my mother and I'm afraid to tell my father because they're going to be disappointed in me. So I'm okay with taking a few minutes out of the day to make sure another student doesn't feel like their only option is to end their life. Mr. Vogelmann, congratulations. We're thrilled to have you. We're thrilled your family's here to witness you taking on this big responsibility. Hopewell Junior, love the kids, way more eloquent than anybody I was in the eighth grade. I'll tell you that right now. I'm more eloquent in most days than I am. Mr. Vogelmann mentioned that our winter sports are wrapping up and so our teams will start participating in postseason tournaments where applicable. Just a couple of shout outs. Girls, Lakota East basketball team had a phenomenal season. They went undefeated in the GMC until Saturday when they played that team that wears green. But they still had a great season and they're going to do well in the postseason. And Lakota East Dance Team, for the first time ever, ever, they won back-to-back state championships and went to Nationals this weekend. They've never been to Nationals. They they made the finals in two events, game day and hip hop, and they came in, and I don't remember which orders which, but they came in eleventh and seventh in the nation for never having been there before. So shout out to them. That's quite an accomplishment. Those kids work really hard. So I'm excited for postseason play. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Adin.
All right, Mr. Vogelmann, thank you so much for stepping up. The good thing is that your contract has been approved. We voted on. Thank you for, for stepping up. We really, really appreciate you. And what I love about everything you say and do is talk a lot about student achievement. I'm one of the beneficiaries of this school district because three of my kids graduated from this school district and I'm very proud of what, who they turn out to be. And I will forever be grateful. And like I said all the time, I owe, I owe that back to the school, to this, this community and to this school district. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best. Sometimes I get discouraged, but I call few people and they say, keep going. You're doing, you're doing the right thing. So you have my support. And I want all the teachers in this school district to know that you are doing a hard job and the board is standing with you. Just make sure you're doing what is right and continue to do what you're doing. It's hard. I have trained, I've trained three kids. I know how hard it is to, to help them be who they are. And these teachers have some of them ten, fifteen, twenty kids in the classroom. So please remember that we got your back. I was very happy on Wednesday, first of February, I attended Lakota West Symphony Wins. Directed by Andrew Carr and Colin Selick. Hope I pronounced the name right. I was so excited when I watched these kids play. And I was very happy to be a board member. And these kids went to Columbus on the second to perform as well. And I'm eager to hear the outcome of that at Columbus. But I'm gonna say this, that I'm a board member. I do my preparation at home. I ask questions. This gentleman here, call them, send them texts, whatever I want to, to, to know or whatever questions I have, or whatever comments, complaints that I have that I send over to them. And I, I'm okay that so far I'm not yet disappointed. I will never come here and read anything anybody provide for me. I will be the board member that do my thinking, observe things, and come here and make sure I represent the parents and the students and the community well. Because if I just read something that is written for me, sometimes I may not even know what I'm, I'm reading. I may not even know what I'm saying. But that's why sometimes when I'm sitting here, I'm listening, I'm like, okay, where are we going with this one? But my focus is on your kids. Students' achievement. What they turn out to be in their future. I'm not gonna play, I'm not gonna play with their lives and their future. And that is my goal. And I vow that that's what I'm going to continue to do. Thank you so much and I appreciate you guys coming on.
Thank you, Mr. Adin. Before my closing comments, just a couple of housekeeping details. Board, a reminder, this Friday, we have committee meetings, community engagement policy, and then going into safety, starting at ten o'clock. And the first two meetings will be at the board office and our last meeting will move over to Plains. Mrs. Bodie, you had passed something to me at the beginning of the meeting about Robert's Rules of Order. And I just want to say that I have several volumes and versions of Robert's Rules and I'm not recognizing the format or the comments here. So I would ask that you please send me electronically a version of this and what your source document is.
I think that will suffice.
And when you do, Mr. Zink, and I will once again look at that and see if there's something we're not doing that we should be doing. So I'll look forward to hearing from you on that. Word, make sure that you check your calendars for upcoming chamber events.
You've been here for how many years? You should know the Robert's Rules of
Also, as a reminder, that would probably be why I have that many volumes of it. So as a reminder, there's a naturalization ceremony at Lakota East that'll be on March fourteenth and I've notified you all about that. Please be sure to let the principal know if you're going to be attending that event. Did you have a question?
Committee meetings, the first one is community engagement at ten, correct? So just the rest of the board doesn't have to come till eleven.
That's true. Thank you. So closing comments. Mr. Vogelmann, that was quite the first week. And I am very thankful for the leadership team that we have. You've both jumped into the fray with both feet and you've been doing a very terrific professional job and thank you for that. I also am thankful about the bus accident. We were sitting there in our community engagement meeting when the word came through on that. Your first thought, of course, is what if there are student fatalities or something along those lines? And so thankful that didn't happen. Thankful for our bus driver's professionalism and training that helped there to be. There were some minor injuries. I think the other driver had some injuries as well, but no fatalities, which was wonderful. So I also sat next to Mr. Adi at the Lakota West Symphony Wins concert that they did as they prepared to go for the fifth time annually to the Ohio, to the Ohio Music Educators Association event. This is the fifth time they've gotten to perform there because they are that talented and it was amazing. It was like listening to a professional concert. So proud of them. And a reminder, once again, as we see throughout our year, that learning takes place not just in the classroom, in a lot of other places as well. And I'm glad that we're able to provide that for our kids. The final thing, and there were several people that said it tonight, and it's something I've been reading a lot about as well. It's very easy to find fault with those that are in the arena. But I would ask that those that find fault would also take an opportunity to be part of the solution. Get involved. Mentor our kids, come in and read. We have kids that don't have a lot of adult influence in their lives. They could use that. Please be part of the solution. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mrs. Schaefer, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Adi, thank you. Mr. Zink, please call the room.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Adi.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Thank you all for coming out.